Thank you everyone for being here tonight. We'll bring tonight's meeting to order. Please rise for your pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none to the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. Presentations. Public hearing for septic setback variance at forty-four twenty-three Fawn Lake Drive. Aaron.
The property owner is requesting a variance to reduce the front yards, or the side yard setback for the placement of a septic drain field from ten to six feet. All other setbacks will be met. Jack, can you change the screen for me? Sorry. The previous system was failing and the previous owner was required to replace the system before the time of closing. The closing was pushed back several times due to the system not being completed. At the time of closing, the previous owner furnished documents falsely stating that the system was compliant as the final inspection failed initially due to lack of electrical inspection. The building inspectors cannot approve a passing final inspection without a variance as they are now aware that the system does not meet the septic code requirements. The consideration of variance requires the consideration of a three-factor test for practical difficulties. Septics are, the first factor is reasonableness. Septic systems are required for a home to be considered habitable. This variance request does not affect the city of East Bethel's required setbacks. However, the building code requires that septic tanks and drain fields be placed ten feet from all property lines. The Minnesota Septic Code allows municipalities to grant variances from these setback requirements. The drain field is located six feet from the property line and is located entirely on the property of the applicant. The second factor is the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. The current property owner did not own the property when the septic system was installed and he had been told that the septic system was installed and was compliant. The applicant did not cause the issue at hand but is working with the city to resolve the issue. The third factor is that a variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The septic system will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood as all residential properties in this area have septic systems and municipal sewer and water will not be brought to this area. Staff is requesting city council hold a public hearing and recommend the approval of a four-foot setback variance from the side property line for the installation of a drain field for four-four-two-three Fawn Lake Drive.
Okay, with that we'll open the public hearing for septic setback variance. Is there anyone here tonight wishing to discuss this matter with council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Motion discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-one-seven, a variance for the reduction in setback from the side property line from ten feet to six feet for the installation of a septic system drain field on property located at four-four-two-three Fawn Lake Drive Northeast, pin number twenty-five thirty-four twenty-three twenty-four zero 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 two legally described as below.
Second.
Suzanne, second. So, discussion.
Jack, how did this house sell in the first place if they had a failing septic because they still let them sell the house? To the, to the new owners?
You can sell a house in the city of East Bethel but at the time of closing, the city requires either escrow or the septic system to be replaced. So, that's why the closing had been pushed back because the previous owner was working on getting the system replaced.
I'm just saying it's gonna cost, cost a new owner more money in all, correct?
The system is already installed and that's where the problem is. When the system was going in, the neighboring property owner, what this system is encroaching towards, pulled, had a surveyor come out and pulled the line and at that point, one of our building inspectors did confirm that it is four feet too close to the property line.
So, it already exists?
Yes.
Can you show me on that map exactly where it is? Cause I tried to figure it out and I couldn't.
So, if you look due west from, like, if you, north of the tree line and due west from the white trailer on the neighboring property is where it is. There is an existing old fence on the neighboring property but the fence was installed when the city had a setback requirement of five feet for a fence line. So, with that being the assumed property line of both the neighbor, the previous owner and the building inspectors, at the time, the site inspection was determined to be correct. It was not until a surveyor was called to actually check that that was found out that that was not the property line.
So, when, so when was the previous inspection? I mean, right up talks about how it was falsely represented as a, as compliant? So, was there a compliance inspection done?
Not on this new system.
I'm sorry?
Not on the new system, so...
But the old system, that's what was falsely?
No, the, the, the title company was told that this new system that was installed was compliant. They were told that it was finished and at some point, someone gave the title company paperwork falsely stating that this was a compliant system. The new property owner came in several weeks after closing to find out that there was not a final, a passing final inspection and as a first-time homeowner was very uncomfortable with this, so the city has been working with him to make sure that this is compliant. And at this point in time, the only non-compliance is the setback requirement.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm fine with the, what's proposed. I guess so I'm trying to find out is, what happened before and then?
I, I do know that there was a bit of complication locating a drain field site due to, I mean, you can, if you look at the aerial view, you can see that the water in this area is very high and it is a mound system, so it's very likely that they would have been requesting a variance anyways just in a different order than how things occurred.
Let me ask it this way. Did documents falsely state it was compliant or incorrectly state?
The, the previous owner was aware that the septic system was not final at the time of closing.
Okay.
Because he had talked, he had spoken with our department the day before they closed and they were told that that final inspection failed.
Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to find out if, I mean, if, if there's a contractor did this or, or what? So, this doesn't happen again is where I'm kinda getting at, so.
It, it has been a point of conversation in the community development department in situations where it is this close, the line will be required to be pulled. Like, if it's a ten-foot setback for a septic system, it's very likely, especially in situations like this, that a survey will be required, at least to flag the lot line directly closest to the system.
Alright. Okay, fair enough. Any other discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. Okay, on to consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
Can I pull item G, please?
Okay. Any other discussion? To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Suzanne, item G.
Item G is a renewal of animal control contractual services, home occupation for gratitude farms and we voted to not renew her contract. I understand this, that she has contracts with other cities and that's why she needs this but people from Ham Lake have spoken to me and they said they don't want their tax money going to gratitude farms. So, I don't know if we should approve this or...
Do you represent Ham Lake residents now?
No, but I represent taxpayers everywhere, so.
I thought you represented East Bethel residents, but, okay.
Ham Lake has to make their own decisions.
Every city does. It's a business.
I understand that.
It's a legitimate business in our city. And again, you're, 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 you know, trying to make an issue out of this. Okay?
I don't have any problem with people voluntarily going and spending their money there. I don't have a problem with any of her other IUPs. None.
But we're not in Ham Lake and you don't represent Ham Lake and our taxpayer dollars aren't going towards it. So, I'm missing why you have a problem with it.
I do because people from Ham Lake talk to me about it.
Well, maybe the people from Ham Lake should be calling their Ham Lake council people.
I think they have.
Well, I don't think there's anything we can do to support, or that we should do to support what Ham Lake has a problem with. Ham Lake needs to address it, address it.
Essentially, if we don't, if we were to pull it without valid major reasons, the city could face a lawsuit. So, it's, just because we, somebody may not like something, we can't make judgments based just on feelings. There has to be, there has to be something definite.
There have been definite complaints against gratitude farms. We all know it. We've had some here.
Jack, how many complaints have we had?
We have three written complaints on record. One was made in twenty-seventeen, two were made in January of twenty-eighteen. The two in January of twenty-eighteen really related to opinions rather than a complaint. The twenty-seventeen complaint was filed by Ashley Wellman regarding Duke the Dog. She had some questions. We followed up on that, responded to Ms. Wellman. Those are the only written complaints we've had on record for gratitude farms since two thousand nine that I'm aware of.
Well, somebody else will have to make the motion because I'm not approving this.
Make a motion to approve AMG of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes. On to new business. Planning Commission.
First, we have item six A-one, the planning commission appointments. On July twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-one, Commissioner Jim Smith's position on the planning commission was vacated. His term was set to expire on January thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three. On August thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one, city council appointed Wanda McLaurin to fill Shelley Beck's vacant city council seat. Due to Ms. McLaurin's appointment to the city council, her resignation from planning commission was accepted and effective on September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Her term was set to expire on January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. These two vacancies were advertised and three applications were received. One applicant withdrew from consideration prior to the candidate interviews. At their September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one meeting, the planning commission voted to recommend appointment of Karen Creppis and Tanner Belfany to the, fill the, on expired terms of Jim Smith and Wanda McLaurin. Planning Commission recommends that city council consider appointing Karen Creppis to the commission for the term expiring January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three and appointing Tanner Belfany to the commission for the term expiring January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Karen Creppis to the planning commission with the term expiring January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three and Tanner Belfany to the planning commission with the term expiring January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion.
I just, I just got a comment. I just wanna thank Karen and Tanner both for coming forward in years past. We've had trouble getting people on these commissions, so it's kinda nice to see more than one person volunteer now, so thank you.
Yep. I, I believe you both will do a wonderful job for the city, so.
Yep, thank you both.
Welcome to P and Z.
Okay, no further discussion. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. Welcome to planning commission. Okay, item two.
This is a variance request for a six-foot fence in the front yard of property addressed twenty-two forty-six Viking Boulevard Northeast. Dan Forsland, the property owner of twenty-two forty-six Viking Boulevard, Viking Boulevard Northeast, has requested approval of a variance to place a six-foot fence along his front property line. City code appendix A, section twenty-five-two C states fences six feet in height and less may be placed anywhere on a lot but not in a required front yard. This property is located in the RR Rural Residential Zoning District. On September twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-one, the planning commission held a public hearing for this variance request. The applicant was present and reiterated his request for noise reduction and security purposes. There are one hundred and sixty properties at a Viking Boulevard to the east of Highway sixty-five in the city of East Bethel. Of those one hundred and sixty properties, there are four with six-foot fences along Viking Boulevard. Three of those six-foot fences are located on the rear property line of the property they are surrounding. The remaining six-foot fence that is along Viking Boulevard is a liking, is a legal non-conforming fence installed before the adoption of the fence ordinance in twenty-ten. The property with the legal non-conforming fence is also located within the mixed-use district as well as the twenty-forty service area. On August twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen, city council denied a request for a six-foot fence in a front yard along County Road seventy-four on the basis that while the applicant was requesting a chain-link fence, in that case, it could be replaced with a privacy fence down the road, which could be used to hide code violations. The fence that the applicant has installed is a privacy fence. Consideration of a variance requires the planning commission to consider the three-factor test for practical difficulties. The first factor is reasonableness. The property owner's submission was, we believe it is reasonable to want a six-foot fence across our front yard. Viking Boulevard has been increasingly busy with traffic and subsequent noise. We would like to try to block some of that noise as well as offering us more privacy and security. The staff response is while the fence is a reasonable use, we were not provided information that a six-foot fence would reduce the noise to a substantially higher level than a four-foot fence. Additionally, trees and other landscaping to screen is allowed by ordinance to be taller than fence construction, which is also addressed in the fence ordinance. The second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. The property owner's submission is, in the thirty-one years that we've lived in our home, Viking Boulevard traffic and noise have increased to the point that it is like living on a highway rather than a county road and that is something over which we have no control. Staff response is noises an issue faced by all of the properties along Viking Boulevard. The majority of the other properties along Viking Boulevard have utilized trees and plantings to mitigate the noise of their traffic. The third factor is that a variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The property owner's submission is, the fence will be within our property boundaries and will give an aesthetically pleasing look to our home and property. Staff response is, the placement of a six-foot vinyl fence will alter the character of the neighborhood. The four-foot maximum was established to combat code compliance issues that are encouraged by the allowance of six-foot fences in front yards. There would likely be substantial requests for additional variances from fence height requirement along Viking Boulevard if this request is approved. The planning commission recommendation is that, or the commissioners discussed the application, acknowledging traffic concerns landscaping would be an effective way to mitigate the noise complaint and their request did not meet the statutory requirements for variance. The commissioners felt landscaping and trees would be more reasonable. Approving the variance would set precedence for other people with similar noise issues on Viking Boulevard and other fences may not have the same visual appeal nor be maintained to a high standard as this resident intends to maintain his vinyl fencing. The planning commissioners voted unanimously, four to zero, to adopt the findings of fact for denial of the variance request and to recommend denial of the variance to city council. Planning Commission recommends that city council deny the variance request for the construction of a six-foot fence along the property, front property line of our rural residential property along Viking Boulevard Northeast.
Okay, there's two resolutions in our packet. One is drafted as a resolution denying and one is drafted as a resolution approving. So, if there's a motion, please designate which.
I'll make a motion for resolution number twenty-two-one-sixty-six, approving a variance request for the placement of a six-foot fence on the front property line on the property located at twenty-two forty-six Viking Boulevard Northeast, PID number two-eight-three-three-two-three-four-two-zero-zero-zero-three. Do I need to read the?
No, I think that's, that's good enough. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second? That motion fails for lack of a second.
I'll make a motion denying a variance request for the placement of a six-foot fence on the front property line on the property located at two-two-four-six Viking Boulevard Northeast, PID number two-eight-three-three-two-three-four-two-zero-zero-zero-three and legally described below.
Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion?
Oh, second.
Motion made, second discussion. Before we proceed, I gotta note that Mr. Forsland wants to present some additional information. If you'd like, if you can come to the podium, please. If you can come to the podium, please. Could I, favor? If you could state your name and address, please.
Dan Forsland, twenty-two forty-six Viking Boulevard. I didn't get brought up in the last meeting, however, just like to really, or let you know, the other issue we have with this is a health issue.
There's additional information. What, the note I got was something, you have information present that wasn't audible? Or available, I'm sorry, available?
I didn't have it with me at that meeting.
And what information is that?
This is a health, health, noise pollution, health, um, things. She could read it better than I can, but, uh, noise pollution due to traffic control. I'll need, I'll, I'll read the main thing. Constant exposure to noise pollution is causing concern to lead into several impacts of the human health. Some of these are irritation and annoyance, sleep disturbance, cardiovascular disease, risk of stroke, diabetes and hypertension and loss of hearing.
So, there's an article you wanna present to council for, okay?
Yeah. I also like to present a couple of things. This is a decibel reader. At my doorstep, reads about eighty decibels. At eighty-five decibels, you're supposed to be wearing earplugs. This is a chart showing the dangerous levels. This is why, this is a needed, needed thing to live in my home and the health of my family. That fence works. I got measured down here at sixty decibels from the eighty. It dropped at twenty from my front doorstep and when I stood, the fence that I have out here out front, I, cause I started putting it up, I stood behind that twenty feet and I dropped at twenty decibels. Fence works. Four-foot fence is not gonna be doing anything, cause you can still see the traffic.
Okay.
You know, it sounds, the four-foot fence is gonna be useless to me. The six-foot works for my well-being and my family.
Okay.
I could go on for another hour. I've got lots of information, but.
Okay. Thank you. To the motion and discussion.
Well, I'm going to say why I think it should be approved. First, it's visually appealing. It's cute. There's nothing wrong. It's not a homely fence. It, it's actually kind of adorable. Probably, it's cuter than looking at his house when you drive by. Crime is increasing and if he has vehicles or something that sit outside all the time, people would be interested on a heavy traffic road like that in burglarizing it. Of course, they, well, never mind that. And so what if other people on Viking Boulevard want a six-foot fence? They'd have to come for a variance too. I don't understand why we have to control this private property. If they, if other people come for a variance, we can make sure that it's going to be an attractive fence.
Yes. Give me the microphone, please. Thank you.
I have signatures from my neighbors, both directions, northeast, southwest, there's sixteen of them. Nobody has a problem with it. They're wondering why I haven't finished it yet.
And did you present that to plan Zoe, or plan?
No.
It's my first time living here. Thirty-one years I had to go through something like this. I blew it the first round.
Okay.
You know, I'm, I'm be honest with you. I blew it the first round. I didn't know how everything proceeds. So, otherwise, I would've probably did more research and brought a lot more up this, but.
Mr. Forsland, can I ask you a question? Why did you start the fence without, why did you put a six-foot fence in the front?
Your, your definition, how it reads, it says...
You did get a fence permit.
Did not get a fence permit, cause you don't need it for, under, under six foot.
But you're building a six-foot fence.
Under eight, eight foot, you gotta get a permit. Six foot, you don't. I knew this fence would work. That's why I started. Now, why, now, you're, you're reading? It says you can place a six-foot fence anywhere on your property. That means I could put it on my roof.
But the front yard.
What?
But the front yard.
Doesn't say but, rather. What does it say exactly?
It states fences six feet in height and less. Fences six feet in height and less may be placed anywhere on a lot but not in a required front yard.
So...
Not in a front yard.
Okay, we need to speak English. Not in a required.
But not in a re, required.
See, I, I kinda read that as if you got six foot in the back, you don't have to, you're not required to put a six foot in the front. That's the way I look at that. You need, better terminology, I think.
That's not how it's stated.
It should state, you know, but you should take out anywhere on your property because front yard's my property. I mean, you should really revise that. So, it says four feet front, six feet.
But, but you're clear, you can't, you're clear, the, the ordinance is four feet in front. You're clear on that.
Now, yeah. Not when I started the fence, you know. I was gonna do this right by putting a six foot. Four foot's not gonna cut it. With all that noise and the traffic is gonna get worse and worse and worse. We know that down the road. You finish the development down on sixty-five Viking?
I've lived on that road for thirty years. I know what the traffic's like.
So, you know it is, okay, so.
I, I don't agree with you, but I know what the traffic is.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just gonna get worse and I just gotta do something to live there, cause, you know.
Well, I, you know, the one thing, I don't wanna relitigate what happened in planning, but one of the discussions in that, the stated in the write-up too, is most folks plant trees. First thing I did thirty years ago was plant trees.
But according to Minnesota DOT?
On your property, you can plant trees.
You can. Doesn't work unless you have one hundred feet of thick forest, right by the Minnesota DOT.
Okay.
It's right there, Minnesota DOT.
Okay.
So, that's, this is, this is the fix, so I've been able to live there.
Okay.
You know, I mean, it makes sense. And what, you know, and somebody said, what's the difference between two feet and four feet? Okay, I'm saying, what's the difference between two feet and four feet? It's a beautiful fence. Everybody says, why don't you finish it? I mean, it's a great idea and I think... I mean, it's a great idea, and I think maybe along Viking, you might have to amend that thing so possibly people can get some rest and peace. And it's for their health.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion on motion?
Well, I, I understand what the property owner is saying. I do feel for him. I can understand the concern. But it should have been reviewed before he started construction of it. And there are other ways to deal with the sound and traffic. Unfortunately, some plantings take time to grow in. But you purchase a home on a county road, you have to expect some road noise.
So collector, twenty-two is a major ulterior, I think, across the county, so. It was gonna be a state highway at one time.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question about the motion? The, the motion is to adopt the resolution denying. Is, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the motion that's on table right now. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. To the motion to deny, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
And that motion passes. On to item three.
This is for a private kennel license for the keeping of ten dogs over the age of four months at two-two-three-five-nine Baton Street for Tammy Gimble. Tammy Gimble has held a private kennel interim use permit at two-two-three-five-nine Baton Street since two thousand and two. The city attorney reviewed the private kennel IUP issuance and determined that a license is required for a private kennel and not an IUP. With this clarification, the city will move forward with a private kennel license request as a separate, separate license and not as an IUP. This property is twenty-six point five-one acres with wetlands and ponds. Chapter ten, Article two, Division two of City Code governs kennel licenses, and the ordinance states that a ma, the maximum number of dogs allowed with a private kennel license is determined by the number of acres. In the case of this property, it meets subpart four, which specifies for properties with ten acres or more, a maximum of ten dogs may be allowed. This private kennel license is separate from her home occupation of animal control officer and is only for the keeping of her personal dogs. The city has not received any code enforcement complaints regarding the keeping of Ms. Gimble's dogs, nor any code enforcement complaints regarding this property. The planning commission held a public hearing for this request on September twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-one. At the public hearing, one neighbor had inspection questions but expressed no significant, no specific objections to the private kennel use at this location. The planning commissioners discussed this item, and they acknowledged that the applicant has the proper acreage, that she's within city code and state requirements, and that she has been consistent in following the guidelines for this use. They voted unanimously, four to zero, to approve the issuance of the private kennel license. Planning Commission recommends that the city council approve the private kennel license for the keeping of ten dogs over the age of four months at two-two-three-five-nine Baton Street. With the following conditions as set forth in the attached resolution.
Okay, we have a resolution in our packet. Is there a motion tonight?
So it's the resolution we have to approve?
Yes.
Make a, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash six-seven, resolution granting a private kennel license for the keeping of up to ten dogs over the age of four months on property located at twenty-two thirty-five-nine Baton Street Northeast.
Second.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item four.
This is the preliminary plat for Anderson Meadows by Carrington Development LLC. The plat consists of ten buildable, single-family residential lots. Of the proposed lots, one is the minimum acreage of two acres. The average lot size of the proposed plat is three point seven eight-five acres, which exceeds our average of two point five acres per lot. Therefore, all lots meet city code requirements. The Parks Commission will review the plat at tomorrow's meeting for October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, to make a recommendation of parkland or park fees. Staff recommends cash in lieu of land, as there is undeveloped parkland within the Oakbrook Acres plat. The park dedication fee is determined by five percent of the fair market value of the undeveloped land, not to exceed two thousand dollars per acre. Staff is working with the property owner to determine the amount required for park dedication fees, which will need to be paid prior to the release of the final plat for filing with Anoka County. In two thousand and three, city council approved the plat for Oakbrook Acres. Staff has attached the sketch plan and final plat for Oakbrook Acres, which details that Gia Street was intended to extend to the north when land was developed. Therefore, as part of the Oakbrook Acres development, a temporary cul-de-sac was constructed, constructed as shown on attachment four and five. As part of the City Code, Chapter sixty-six, Section sixty-six dash one sixty-four streets, permanent cul-de-sacs, permanent cul-de-sac lengths over five hundred feet require a variance. There are residents living in the Oakbrook Acres subdivision that do not support the Gia Street Northeast extension to the north and would rather see a new cul-de-sac from Durant Street to access Anderson Meadows. The fire chief and public works manager reviewed concerns and have the following comments. Nate Ashford, the public works manager, is in support of the subdivision street as proposed with no comments on the plat. Mark DeSharm, the fire chief, is in support of the plat as proposed, noting that the access to Durant Street is necessary from a safety standpoint. This can be seen in his statement dated September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, in a, in attachment six. The planning commission held a public hearing on September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Residents present stated they were against this request, as there are children who plan the cul-de-sac, as well as for security reasons. The planning commission discussed this item, expressing empathy for the residents' opposition, but they support the recommendation of the fire chief and risk to public safety, supporting the extension of Gia Street to Durant Street. The planning commission voted unanimously, four to zero, to recommend approval for the preliminary plat to city council. The recommendation is, planning commission recommends approval of the preliminary plat known as Anderson Meadows with the conditions set forth in the attached resolution. Before the meeting, staff did supply you with the updated engineer comments, as the initial letter that was supplied by our engineer has already been addressed.
Okay, is there a motion on this tonight? I'll make a motion for approval of the primary plat known as Anderson Meadows with the conditions set forth in the attached resolution.
I'll second.
Does that also include the?
The resolution twenty, twenty-one dash sixty-eight.
The October eleventh letter? Okay.
Okay, Morrison's been made, second discussion. Aaron, you stated that this is going to Parks tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, usually we have their feedback before we act on it, because what happens in the case that their recommendation is parkland?
We would be bringing, we would bring it back to council before the final plat designation for approval or for discussion.
I, I, I think that this was a fast track, and it didn't have the opportunity to go to Parks in September.
In the sixty days, we didn't have any time to get it to Parks?
As, as far as I know, there was nothing for the Parks Commission, was presented to them for last month's meeting.
Last month's meeting was canceled.
Yeah.
Right, but when did this application come in?
Believe.
It's definitely more than thirty days ago.
Yeah, it would have been the last week of September. I think it was the. Monday was the holiday. So it'd be Tuesday, September seventh, was the submission date.
And we've had, and we had a park meeting since then. I mean, it was canceled. But why was it canceled? For lack of agenda items?
Lack of agenda items.
Then why wasn't this an agenda item?
I don't know. I'd have to check.
So sixty days isn't up until first of November, beginning of November, then? I'm gonna make a motion to table on the fact that this hasn't gone to planning before it comes to city council.
Second.
You mean Parks?
Parks, I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. On the motion to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. So let's go to Parks, and this will come back to city council next regular meeting. Steve.
Can I get a grading permit or something? Because if I don't start now, I might, I might as well.
I don't think you can do anything without, without a approved preliminary plat.
I can grade, can't I? Because without, then this year is over.
I understand. We, we need to have input from Parks before we make a decision. Council should be making a decision and asking for Parks opinion afterwards, so.
There's absolutely nothing that can be done differently with this situation. Can, can it be? I don't know.
I mean, council can call a special meeting just for this, but I don't, I mean, we're within the sixty days.
I understand that, but.
Well, it's our next meeting, it's the twenty-fifth.
Two weeks.
It doesn't leave time to get it graded and paved, and without paving, you can't, you know.
I, I understand, but we, we didn't have any control when you submitted your application either, so.
Mr. Nelson, would he be able to start doing any grading?
Well, it would have to be an exception. I mean, typically, we would have, number one, there's a condition in the resolution as proposed saying that there needs to be a memorandum, memorandum of understanding for street improvements prior to grading. I'm not sure whether or not that has been done. Secondly, we haven't gone through any type of development agreement on this, so we, we don't even have a draft development agreement yet. Typically, we'd like to see that in advance as well.
We, we would have that, even if this would have passed tonight, we'd still have to have that development agreement.
Correct.
Before grading could start.
Correct.
And we'd have to approve the development agreement.
Correct.
Which would be in two weeks.
The development agreement isn't required until the final plat is to be recorded. I'm not asking for final plat recording. I'm just asking to grade and build it. The final plat is when the development agreement and the escrow that's remained and things to add. The escrow amount is based on what's left, where, of course, warranty and any other unfinished items at that time would be that developers.
And I, and I, I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's been a memorandum of understanding on street improvements. I don't know if that's been reviewed by the city engineer. And it, it certainly hasn't been approved or entered into. Correct me if I'm wrong about that.
Craig is presently working on those. I do want to acknowledge that it is standard practice for the city to issue one new home permit during this process to developers before the approval of a plat, and that's pretty standard through the metro area. So it, it is standard practice to approve or for the city to allow one home to go in during the process.
And that doesn't need any council action to do that. That's.
Going, going back to the Parks Commission meeting, as Steve said, this application was submitted on Tuesday, September the seventh. The Parks Commission meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, September the seventh, so there was no way this could have been on.
Well, and this shouldn't have been brought to council until after the Parks meeting, which is in two weeks, we could have taken this up again. Still been within our processes, why we have a process set up with these commissions, so.
So back to the grading, there isn't an option for the grading?
Well, I think if you could get that memorandum of understanding done on the street improvements as approved by the city engineer, that wouldn't seem to be an issue at that point. I just don't think that's been done yet.
I, it's been requested from Craig. I am anticipating it within the next week. We can request it sooner.
So could we have a special meeting next Monday before the EDA meeting just to approve an MOU?
Are we gonna do this for every application? I mean, I, I, my, my point is, there is a six, there's a sixty-day application period for this to get over in town.
I, I can understand.
Staff skip the stuff, and, and if I was on Parks Commission, I wouldn't be too pleased that they were passed over.
I, I can understand, but I can also understand the weather and construction. That, that's the only reason I'm asking.
I understand.
This applicant has done a lot of business in the city, and we'd like to.
What documents need to be drafted before we get a special meeting?
It, it's my understanding based on what Chris just said, that it would only be the Parks statement or the Parks determination and then the MOU.
Okay. Well, if, if we can call a special, I can call a special meeting this week, and if, if all that information gets done there, I can call it on Wednesday still and have a meeting in one day if we need to. Now, two of us are already gonna be there, so the rest council will have to be there for a special meeting.
I have no problem with that.
I'm, okay, if you're, if the rest council, I'm already gonna be there, so it's.
I like to work with Mr. Stranland. I mean, it, you know, that's what we're here for. We're here to work with people, so let's, let's, we can help them out, so.
Okay.
I mean, I, this is a case-by-case thing, you know, it's just.
If this, if, if we're in June, we won't do it. But seeing as how it's October, I, I would suggest that we do.
Okay, so just let me know when, well, after tomorrow night's meeting, so Wednesday morning.
In addition to that, you can probably take up the whole preliminary plat at that time as well, not just the MOU.
Yeah, I mean, I think that works, so. Okay, so that's the plan. And then we can take it up at the special meeting next week, though. Okay. All right. Moving on, number five, zoning text amendments.
We have Appendix A zoning text amendment and zoning map amendments. Approximately one thousand public hearings, public hearing notices were mailed out to the property owners whose property is affected by the proposed code and zoning changes. As part of the public hearing notice, there was a map showing the zoning changes and a link to the city of East Bethel website, in which a draft of the text changes and map are available for review. There was also a copy of changes available to review at city hall. Before the public hearing, staff received phone calls and emails from approximately one hundred property owners with specific questions. The most common question was how this would affect, how this change would affect their property taxes. The consensus of the resident calls supported proposed changes. Since the adoption of the two thousand and forty comprehensive plan, city staff has been working on amendments to the zoning code and zoning map to ensure compliance with the plan. The majority of the amendments are minor in nature. City council reviewed and discussed the amendments at the September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one work session, and at the September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting. City council supports the amendments to this zoning code and zoning map. As part of the adoption of the two thousand and forty comprehensive plan, the land use on certain residential properties changed. Therefore, the zoning must change to reflect the comprehensive plan. The changes occurred because it has been determined by the Metropolitan Council that the properties will not be part of the Metropolitan Urban Service Area or the area with sewer and water. The zoning on a portion of the properties located south of Viking Boulevard will change from R-one, single-family residential to RR Rural Residential and R-one, single-family residential to CL Coon Lake Residential. All the zoning changes occur east of Highway sixty-five and south of Viking Boulevard. Attachment three shows the proposed changes, and attachment four shows the current zoning. Changes to the zoning code. The most notable change to the zoning code is the creation of the Coon Lake CL Residential District. There are properties that previously were zoned R-one, single-family residential. The only changes to the CL district is that the side yard setback is reduced from ten feet to seven feet, and minimum lot sizes without swimming water is reduced from ten acres to two acres. This only pertains to new residential developments. Previously, the second change is previously additions to commercial buildings greater than ten percent of the existing footprint required a site plan review in front of the planning commission and city council meetings. The code will now require additions greater than twenty-five percent to require a site plan review. Three, car washes are now allowed within all zoning, all business districts as a. Three, car washes are now allowed within all zoning, all business districts as a conditional use. Four, brewery and taprooms are permitted in all business districts. Previously, they were limited to the light industrial district. Five, the business and industrial districts are required to have lighting in off-street parking areas with a minimum of zero point five-foot candle illumination. Six, the mixed-use district, MXU, was created and adopted on March eighth, two thousand twenty-one, but was not incorporated into pertinent sections of the code. The amendment adds MXU and CL throughout the zoning code. Seven, a new definition is added for non-residential uses in the residential district and sidewall height is redefined. And eight, planned unit developments are now allowed within all residential and commercial districts and are required in the mixed-use district. On September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, the planning commission held a public hearing. There were several Coon Lake Beach residents who attended for information on what the rezoning would change for their properties. The residents presented question- requested clarification on what the rezoning would mean for their properties as well as tax implication for their properties. The zoning changes were addressed by staff, and there was clarification that city zoning is not a considered factor when properties are assessed by the county. Planning commission recommends approval to city council of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash six, amending appendix A zoning and the zoning changes to the official city of East Bethel zoning map.
Is there a motion tonight on this?
I will make a motion to approve city council ordinance twenty dash twenty, twenty twenty-one dash zero-six, amending appendix A zoning and the zoning changes to the official city of East Bethel zoning map.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second discussion.
I just- I just have a comment for- for you. Next time when you send the letters out, could you be- put some more information in there? I mean, I got four calls. You know, if we would explain like the taxes and this benefits of smaller lots, I don't think you would have got half the people you would have had here. You know, if there'd have been a little bit more information on that letter sent out.
Well, that- that was actually our direction at council when we talked about before the letters went out was- was include- include the map and then include it just to-
But there was- there was nothing-
I know, it wasn't there. Yeah, I know it wasn't there, so.
I mean, otherwise, I'm fine with that. I just, you know, a little bit more information, and I don't think, you know, you probably wouldn't have got all the calls and the rest of us probably wouldn't have got calls, so.
I apologize for that.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. We're done with that, so.
For this year.
Yeah. That was a process. All right, on the department reports, city minister Jack.
Item seven G one, animal control services contract. At the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting, the Gratitude Farms Animal Control Office Services contract was canceled and city council directed staff to negotiate a similar one-year agreement with North Metro Animal Care and Control. Staff contacted North Animal Care on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one to determine their interest in resubmitting an updated proposal for the contract with the city. North Metro Animal Control submitted a proposal for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three cities' animal control services contract in December of two thousand twenty. Mark Anderson, director of North Metro Animal Control, offered a contract proposal which was identical to their previous submittal. The proposal was reviewed and minor amendments were recommended by the city attorney. The proposed contract is exhibited in attachment one of your packet. For the city attorney's opinion, there are no substantial differences in the attached proposal and the current contract with Gratitude Farms. The only change in the North Metro Animal Control contract from their RFP submittal of last December is a five-dollar increase in after-hours pickup from thirty-five to forty dollars. North Metro Animal Control's contract has a fee scheduled for service and is scheduled as listed in their proposal. Staff has received certificates of their general liability insurance and workers' compensation coverage along with the Minnesota Board of Animal Health Kennel License for two thousand twenty-one. North Metro Animal Control is one full-time and two part-time employees. Their kennel is located at one-six-six-two, one-hundred-and-sixty-fourth Lane Northeast, Andover, Minnesota. North Metro Animal Control contracts with the cities of Spring Lake Park, Redley, Columbus, Blaine, Ramsey, Andover, Oak Grove, now then St. Francis and Princeton, the townships of O'Rourke, Blue Hill, and Livonia, and parts of Shusago County for animal control services. Funds for this service in the amount of eight thousand dollars are included in the city's two thousand twenty-one budget, and the same amount is proposed in the preliminary budget for two thousand twenty-two. Staff is requesting that council consider the approval of the North Metro Animal Control and Care for the city of East Bethel Animal Control Services contract with the term to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
I will make a motion to approve the North Metro Animal Control and Care for the city of East Bethel Animal Control Service contract with the term to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made in second discussion. And this commences- this contract commences when?
It would commence when we get it signed tonight. We'll take it to him tomorrow, so it'll commence tomorrow or the next day.
Okay.
So I- I do have a question, though. We're budgeting eight thousand dollars, but I think he read- I read somewhere where he said he caught charges way less than that.
Well, we don't know because it depends on the number of animals he picks up. With the previous contract, it was a flat fee, but if he picks up thirty animals, it will definitely be less than that. But if he picks up two hundred, we also have to have that in there, too, just to make sure we cover that.
I can't remember my next question. Never mind. Go ahead.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. On the staff report.
I have nothing further to add.
Okay, on to council reports. Tim.
I've got a couple of things. This morning, the fire department had online water supply. And then this Wednesday night at six-thirty, here in the chambers, if anybody's interested, Booster Day meeting. We're looking for volunteers. It's- it's not a tough job, so. And we wanna kinda really ramp it up this next year, so if you want to volunteer-
Volunteers for what? Say that again.
What's that?
Will you say that again? We're looking for volunteers.
Volunteer for Booster Day.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, six- in the meeting, six-thirty this Wednesday. So if you can make it, if you want to volunteer, come Wednesday night at six-thirty. That's all I got.
Good. Suzanne.
I went to the planning commission meeting and there were- it was a full house. It was very interesting. I loved to see all the residents being- paying attention and getting involved. It was really wonderful, actually. And then when they saw the light, you know, of what's going on, it was great. I did agree with them on this development, but we'll talk about that when it comes up as far as it extending to Durant Street. I do have an airport meeting this week, and Jack, did you get the email with the link to it?
The e- it's posted on the website.
Perfect. Okay, so if you have any in- input into the airport, Blaine Airport, go to- and want to participate in that meeting, go to that link. That's all I have.
Okay, Wanda.
Sunrise breakfast this Thursday morning at seven-thirty at Route sixty-five for the chamber if anybody's interested in attending. And I will have my first park department meeting tomorrow. That's all I have.
Right.
Jack and I attended the Highway sixty-five coalition meeting. Not a whole lot happened, but they- it was more of a bring us up to speed of what has happened. There's a discussion of the status of the video product, per video production project for Highway sixty-five. They've done some drone footage and they will start working on a narrative or a script before starting to engage any production on it. Blaine had a bonding tour, House and Senate toured Blaine to show the need for projects for funds. And the status of a Blaine project currently. Anoka County and Blaine has teamed up to come up with a design for parts of sixty-five along in Blaine. Then they also gave the Viking RCI presentation that we had here for us and presented that to all the communities. And that was pretty much it on. There is a section of community updates during that. I brought up the subject of our broadband infrastructure project that we'll be starting and that garnered a lot of interest from a lot of the people that attended. So it's just kind of an interesting note. So unless Jack has anything to add on that and no, otherwise that should be it. Fall is coming. Again, get some pumpkins.
You touched on one thing I was gonna ask about is the status of the broadband contract. Do you assume we have discussions?
It'll be presented to council the next meeting.
Okay, good. So discussions.
Yep.
You got- you have a contract?
That's correct. We have a proposed contract.
Okay, and then Sand Hill Parkway, what's the stat? We have a schedule yet when that's gonna be open?
October twenty-ninth is the ribbon-cutting date.
All right. I didn't see them working at all today, so they must be pretty done, so.
Yeah, they're-
Just for the second-
Just wear clothes is all I need.
That's it. They've got the pad for quick trip and everything done.
Yeah, I saw they agreed the pad today, so. And that is all I have. Take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Our meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Jack, what time do you think the ribbon-cutting will be? No idea, I'm sure.